Tonight for Tuesday, January the 26th, for the Davidson County Board of Commissioners. Tonight I'll be leading us in the invocation and the pledge. Bow with me. Dear Heavenly Father, we thank you so very much for the food we have eaten today, the building in which we meet, the health that we have experienced, and the resources at our disposal. We are so grateful to be living in a democracy where many play a part in making sure the needs and the desires of the nation's citizens are heard and met. As our leaders here in our state and nation work together to find solutions to difficult problems, we ask for guidance on how we and they speak and interact, and that we and they be advocates for our constituents and others. We have finished yet another divisive election season, and our tendency can be to draw firm lines between ourselves based on which candidates we support, and that can in turn lead to personal dislike, anger, and eventual division. We pray that our leaders will be men and women of integrity, that we not distort justice or show partiality, accept bribes which blinds the eyes of the wise and subverts the cause of those who are in the right. That's from Deuteronomy 16. And in Matthew 12, we read, "Every kingdom divided against itself is laid waste, and no city or house divided against itself will stand." Use us to cultivate the kind of county you would have us to be. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I see in the audience Dr. Lipe. We'd like to welcome you, Board of Education members Neil Mottzinger and Kristy Bonnet. Thank y'all for being with us tonight. Thank you, department heads and staff who are with us, and thank you, citizens, for joining us tonight. I'd also like to recognize Tim Manus, who is the Lexington Chambers Council of Chambers representative to be at our meeting tonight. Thirdly, I'd like to recognize Lillian Coontz, who will lead off this item with an update.
Mr. Smith, had you spoken with her?
She's, she might have known she was coming, yes.
Okay.
Lillian's had, as you can imagine, rough last couple of weeks. I know she's tired, so, but she was gonna be here this evening to give you a quick update.
I apologize, the speaker's not on out there, so I couldn't hear you.
Unless we had people out there sitting, I'm sorry.
Well, Jerry was out there, and we didn't think there were seats, so we just sat out there. How's everybody doing? Sorry about that. I'm here to tell y'all a little bit about, well, I think that, y'all need to sit down. I'm here to tell y'all a little bit about where Davidson County is with the vaccines. First and foremost, I think you all are aware that this week was quite a disappointment when we received zero vaccines. Heartbreaking to our staff who talks to folks every day, who, they just want a vaccine. They are trying so hard, and our supply is just not even close to the demand that we have in our community. However, our department as of today has done 8,597 first doses. Tomorrow, we will have zero sitting on our shelves. It's so difficult, and I keep asking the state how we're supposed to manage mass clinics, vaccinate everybody, and get down to zero, because it's a two-dose series. And so, we are trying so hard to get the word out in the community, please keep your second dose. We are telling everybody that, because I think I've told y'all so many times, but the doses are in vials, and when you get a vaccine on a day, we use all the vaccines. We've not thrown a single one away. We're so thankful for that. But you're part of that vaccine group, and we expect to see you either three or four weeks later, so that that whole vaccine group can get that whole set of vaccines, and we're whole. So we're trying very, very hard to share that information. Wanted to let y'all know, too, that we're vaccinating six days a week. We're working on Saturdays at the Health Department. Thursdays and Fridays, we've been at Davidson-Davy Community College. They have been phenomenal partners. This week, we added Monday to try to clear our shelves. This week, we did 994 doses on Monday at the community college. We also did doses at the Piedmont Retirement Center in Thomasville. We did doses at the Health Department. And then, we also partnered with a local provider and gave them some doses this week so that they could vaccinate their own employees. Last week, when we saw the allocations for Davidson County, once again, your Health Department was the only provider receiving vaccines. Very difficult. We have high hopes that other providers will get on board. This is a state issue, but hopefully, they'll be onboarded soon, and I don't know exactly how many have requested to be enrolled, but they're waiting for approval from the state. And then, of course, it's a supply and demand thing. But we are hopeful that we will no longer be the only provider soon, so that we can get more vaccines in arms quickly. I also wanted to remind y'all, you have 91 people that work at your Health Department that have done this work, and they are working incredibly hard. It is challenging. We have to talk to people who show up at the Health Department, who managed to get an appointment, and they're not eligible, and then we have to turn them away. And they are very sad, they are disappointed, and it's hard for our staff. So I just want to tell you guys, keep us in your thoughts, keep our team in your thoughts, please, because this is, these are hard times. But I have to tell you, the results that we're seeing are really good. The community seems to be very happy with what we're doing. Those who can't get an appointment are frustrated. Our phone system continues to be a burden, because they're not able to get there on the phone. Some folks are having a hard time getting through online, but the folks that are able to get through online and get an appointment tell us it's a wonderful system, and everything works well, and they're so appreciative. So we're trying very, very hard to make sure that we are doing everything we can to keep more vaccines coming into our community. With that, I'll take questions, but I just kinda wanted to update you guys with where we are.
Madam Chair, if I may. Lillian, I met with some of the folks from Congressman Ted Budd's office today, who were extremely appreciative of you and your staff. You continue to now not only set the bar in the state of North Carolina, but you're known in Washington. So in talking to them, they, I actually brought Casey in, because he knew the numbers and knew more about it. But in talking to them, they are looking into the issue of why we didn't get any doses this year, this week. And they were in, supposed to be leaving me and going straight to a private conference with the governor to find out exactly what's going on. I know the state says it's the feds, and the feds, you know, and everything's back and forth, but, so Congressman Budd's office is working on that. Hopefully, we'll have some kind of resolution and a way to get those doses to the people much better and sooner. So thank you again for everything you do.
Yes, sir, thank you.
Madam Chair.
How many doses did you say we've given out?
First doses, 8,597. Second doses, 600.
Yeah, what is this, 11,000?
He's, on the state's website, they've got the dashboard out there, there must be some other folks.
There, we are the only provider receiving, but there are some ways that, I'm not exactly privy to the state system, but I believe, you know, we've got NOVA and Wake Forest here, so I think that some of theirs, yes, sir, I think some of theirs in Davidson County are counted.
Got you.
So I'm very confused, I tried to look at myself today, before I came here to prepare, if that is Davidson County residents that have received, or if those are Davidson County administered. Because we all know, I mean, I've met people from all over the state since we've been giving these vaccines, and from other states, that people are coming to Davidson County to get it. So I'm still trying to dig into that, and I will try to provide an update to the manager tomorrow about that.
And if we look at the, you know, the number of counties that I'm looking at here, you know, we're right there, we're doing fantastic jobs. Congratulations, you and your staff. I've seen them in operation, and they're, they do a great job.
They are top-notch, Commissioner Shell. I mean, they are just, they're digging deep. Yesterday, it was raining, it was cold, and we're dealing with folks that can't get out of the car, so we need to be outside in these tents, and that staff's there. We get them those little hand warmer things, and they freeze, but they do it, and they smile. And that's just, COVID-19 has been difficult for everybody for almost a complete year now, and we are trying to make this next step in the process as pleasant as possible, as pleasant as a vaccine can be. But we just feel like it's important to welcome the folks who come see us with open arms and have a good experience, and we're just trying really hard.
Absolutely. Madam Chair, if I could speak, you know, this week is, has been difficult, and over the, the last couple of weeks, I've been in contact with Hattie Gowande, out of the Secretary Cohen's office, part of the, the conference call this past week with Secretary Cohen. She had a heartfelt apology to all the staff. I really felt like she meant that. I know that the new administration in Washington is talking about ramping up the vaccine. I think we are looking at an allocation of somewhere about 121,000 that we're gonna have to split that up within all the counties. I know she's talking about moving forward and, and giving us a three-week guarantee on what we're gonna get, but who knows what that number's gonna be? Your back is set up against the wall. We have over 100,000 people here in Davidson County, and we have a higher rate in the elderly population. So the, the population gimmick that they were pulling, I really wasn't feeling, and I've let them know that, that you need to look at the overall age of the county. I think you're doing a phenomenal job. I will mirror what Commissioner Shore says, and what Commissioner Shell says, and the rest of the board, because we're your cheerleaders here. You're doing a phenomenal job. We're your advocate, we're reaching out to Raleigh. I've personally talked to Secretary Cohen. Hattie's sending out stuff daily, but you're doing a phenomenal job. Keep your head up.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, approval process. That leads me to ask a question. When did the state start this approval process? Because we've been working on a vaccine for many, many months.
The official approval process for us, as the local health departments and hospitals were the first eligible providers to be able to enroll. That happened in maybe November of last year, that we were able to do that. The providers locally, I can get a date for you, but it's been within the last month. We, as a local health department, received the information, and we dispersed it to our community partners.
Because that, that seems like that could be an issue. It don't matter how many vaccines we have, if we don't have the people to administer it.
That's right.
Like I say, the Health Department's doing a great job with what they got, but if they give us 50,000 vaccines tomorrow, we wouldn't have the capacity to, to give them without some other providers, right?
Correct, but loophole, maybe not the right word, workaround from your Davidson County Health Department. We have been able to, I don't wanna use the word transfer, because transfer is, has a different definition in COVID-19 vaccine. But we have been able to, and we did this last week because we had more vaccines, we sent a qualified nurse who could watch over the vaccines to the Thomasville Pediatric Office. They had all sorts of providers that were eligible that could do vaccines, and they held a clinic in Thomasville on Saturday with one Davidson County Health Department nurse, and we got 160 vaccines done that way. So that's what we're trying to do. Now, it's not perfect, but that is a solution to a problem. So we have 30 nurses at the Health Department. We have providers that maybe not, are not eligible yet, and should we receive a great amount of vaccines, we could use our nurses to monitor the vaccines at other locations. With that also, we opened up a volunteer portal on our website, which was great. We had so many volunteers, we had to shut it off because we couldn't keep up with all the volunteers. But of those, 86 people are able to administer vaccines. So we worked with vaccine volunteers on Monday and Saturday at the Health Department. And so, they were great. They are like the nicest and most eager people. So we're trying to work around that, Commissioner Yates. I want you to know that we're not just sitting here thinking we're, we're the only ones.
No, but I get it, but it's not your, I mean, you know, it's not y'all's job to approve these providers.
You may remember, I think I told y'all, it was a really difficult process. It's the one where we had to take pictures of our units, we had to give the manufacturer numbers, we had to talk about the, the data loggers that talk about, that track the temperature, and then we have to keep all these very detailed notes about the vaccine. So it is a complicated process, which maybe would deter some providers for, from seeking this enrollment. They've not given us a list of who has applied. And then, of who applies, I'm not sure who will be eligible. I do know I've talked with Sandy Motley at Davidson Medical Ministries. They are part of the Contegra FQHC. Contegra, used to be called Gaston, Family Health or FQHC, but, so you might know that name, but Contegra is an enrolled provider. Their main office is in Gaston County. They have several satellite agencies. Davidson County is one of them, and Sandy has high hopes that they'll be receiving vaccines through a transfer from their main office.
Commissioner Yates, this morning, Commissioner Shore's and I reiterated exactly what you said. If the Ted Budd folks asked us what can they do, I said, for me, rather than give me a lot of supply that I can't handle, I need more vaccinators. So whatever, you can go talk to your folks at Congress, or whoever's approving all that stuff, let them know, I need an eas, I understand you gotta have paperwork, but I need, I need an easiest process as possible. I think they got the message. So, Mr. Manager, when, when I talked to Secretary Cohen, they were talking about really pushing out to the providers that are the hospitals to partner with the key, the primary health departments in those counties, so that we can partner with those, have mass vax events, because they have more staff. And then, they were also talking about the National Guard. I was concerned about people arriving in full army gear, because people think martial law and all that kinda stuff, but they do have trained nurses. They do have people who we can train for the CDMS software. So that's another thing that they're rolling out, that the governor and Sprayberry was talking about, hey, listen, utilize the National Guard. So I think there's avenues when we get to that part. Maybe we can, we can partner with some of these hospitals. That's another one. And so, that's a big one. I've heard Mandy say that on calls, too. If they could ever get, and I don't know how they're working through the Walgreens of the world, et cetera, but that's gonna be a game changer, if that could ever come to life. So I think they're all aware of it, how you work through that, I ain't sure, because that's on their side. But I do, I do know they know of it.
Well, I guess here's my question. When's the state gonna, I mean, they gotta have some sort of answer for us, when they gonna start telling us who the providers are and who's approved, right?
So the way that I receive it, and I should forward the next one, the allocation that I get to the manager to share with y'all. It comes to me on a weekly basis, and it, and it shows everybody on that list who's getting vaccines, and it shows what vaccines they're getting, if they're first doses or second doses, Moderna or Pfizer, and it just has a list. And it shows what county they're a part of, because some of them are confusing. There's a, there's a Davidson provider, but it is Davidson, North Carolina, not Davidson County. And so, you can look at that and see who's on there. But it doesn't show who's like in the queue for approval or anything like that. But if it was an enrolled provider, they would be on that list, and even if they didn't get any, it would show zero, but they would be a part of that allocation list. And we'll receive that Thursday.
Yeah, if you could share that, because like I say, I mean, we've got some issues. We've got people in the southern end of the county that can't really get to the college. You know, I mean, we need providers in, in different areas of the county.
We've had two conversations with folks down in the southern end of the county. I've spoken with the manager down there, and one of our nurses has spoken with Mount Vista, and we're trying to work something out for that. Again, supply and demand right now, but we've got some, we've got some plans. We're trying very hard on understanding that transportation is an issue, so.
And then, you gotta take reservations for those people, or appointments?
We are feeling really strongly about the appointment model, because we're just continuing to hear from folks that have sat in line for so long, and then they get there, and there's no vaccine for them. Or people that arrive at 4:00 AM in the freezing cold, and they're trying to get in line. So we're trying really, really hard to do it.
The appointment's good, I like that, but I'm just saying, like, the folks in the southern end of Davidson County, they can't get here, they, there's no need for them to try to get on the phone and make an appointment in Lexington, because they can't get here, or they have a difficult time getting here.
Yes, sir.
Especially when you start talking about the 75-year-old and up age, you know?
Yes, sir.
So, and, and I'm not sure Mount Vista wants them there getting their vaccines. I mean, I know, I don't know what the answer is. I guess I'm just asking, has the state, have they looked at this, and do they have providers in different areas? I mean, sure, it'd be a lot better for them to go a mile up the road to the doctor's office and get it.
Yes, sir. I don't know what the state's plan on that is. I sort of, in just my understanding of what they're saying, with 120,000 doses for the state of North Carolina right now, they're more interested in those big pops, those mass vax clinics. Sending it to somebody who can only do 50 doses is not their top priority right now. And that's just where it is. And I don't know when that'll change.
100,000 doses statewide, right?
120 is their expectation, and that goes to hospitals, local health departments, and enrolled providers.
That's an average of 1,000 per county for the folks out here that don't know how many counties or whatever they are. So that's only 1,000 doses.
And it's not even that when you consider that they grow in population, MEK and Wake and Forsyth and Guilford really, those small counties really struggle when they're compared with that. So the allocation system, like Commissioner Elliott was saying, they're working on that. We should have a three-week baseline allocation on Thursday. We will know a minimum dose that we'll get for three weeks, which will help us with planning. We're very excited about that. And there's a possibility we could get more than that baseline. I don't, they were very vague about how that could occur, but it is possible. So I'll know a minimum dose for the upcoming three weeks, and we'll plan accordingly with our appointments. I also want y'all to know, last time I was here, there was a lot of questions about appointments and booking out and things like that. What we saw happen this week is a prime reason why you don't book out, because then they don't send you what you need.
Right.
And you gotta cancel appointments, and you disappoint people, which, as your public health director, I want to tell you, is really cutting this operation off at the knees, because individuals are being responsible, and they're trying to get a vaccine. So they make appointments in multiple places. And the first one that get, they get to is where they'll get their appointment. In Davidson County, we have an incredibly high show rate, because we open appointments on Monday, and we vaccinate them that week. They're not booking weeks out. We vaccinated somebody today. I overheard him when I was working in the clinic, they said, oh, thank goodness, I had an appointment with NOVA in Winston on March 3rd. So that's an appointment that's been booked there. They don't have any guarantee for vaccines, but that's how much ahead of the game we are. So that's an appointment that we were able to dose today. And that gentleman lived in Davidson County.
Lillian, can our EMTs or our paramedics from EMS, can they, can they be certified to give this, and would that help you at all?
Yes, sir.
Would it also lend to what Commissioner Yates is talking about, to where they could go to some of these areas in the county that, that where folks can't get here?
To the EMS base, yeah.
Yeah. You just, the, I'm not a nurse, I think y'all know that. My background is not healthcare, but you have to be certified for intramuscular injections, and a lot of EMTs and paramedics are. The volunteers that we have now are providing us with that certification that they have, and it's a wide variety. We've got doctors, we've got nurses, and we have folks who do EMS-type work.
That would be our advanced, it wouldn't be EMTs, but it would be, they used to call them EMTIs for intermediate, but now they're called advanced EMTs and paramedics. But still, that would, that would open up a whole nother army kinda for you to, to give these vaccines. And if we could, like Commissioner Yates said, get them to our EMS bases throughout the county, and people could get to those bases, then we could do the vaccinations there.
Talking like a public health professional there.
That's a phenomenal point there, Mr. Shore. For clarification, Mandy Cohen said 84,000 vaccines are going just to public health departments. We have 85 health departments over the state of North Carolina, and they're only allocating out of the 120,000, only 84 to 90,000, she said, to our public health departments. The rest are going to the big hospitals and the providers to, to do the mass clinics, like they're gonna do at Panther Stadium, and I think they got somewhere between 5,000 to 15,000 doses.
But these are those 84,000, if I'm correct, that doesn't mean they're equally distributed among the 80.
No, they're not.
There's health.
They're not.
And it seems like to me, the biggest challenge you've got is recognizing how many doses just you might get, and, and knowing how many volunteers you're gonna have to have.
That's true.
Because you can't have volunteers just sitting around, you know?
That would be the worst, yes, sir. You invite somebody to come, and they sit there and don't have anything to do. So yeah, it's a Monday project. We, on Mondays, well, actually, it really probably starts on Thursday. Last week, I got the email at 9:30 on Thursday night, which I wasn't bothering the staff, that, I mean, they deserved to rest. So we started on Friday, planning out for the next week, and that's what we did. So yes, sir, it is challenging when you don't exactly know. So I'm looking forward to the three-week baseline, even if it's a lower number than we want. It gives us a ballpark, and we know. And if we get more, great. But if not, we can still plan accordingly for three weeks. We can get in some new volunteers who haven't joined us yet, get them trained up, so when it does happen, that we get that large dose. They can't tell me when that'll be. But when it happens, we've got some avenues. We've got volunteers, we've got nurses that can go to providers. Maybe we can roll in with some paramedic folks who are in our community. We're talking with other partners, like I said, we're talking with Denton already about the issues there, because Winston is also far off, and our northern end of the county is far off, too, but they're closer to Winston, where there's more opportunities for vaccines there. So the southern end of our county is prime, very top of our list of how do we get to those folks.
Question, you had mentioned before of how many first-time shots had been given, and then, when you mentioned the second, it was way down. What happens if the people don't go back and get the second? Do you have to destroy those?
So, that is an excellent question, but let me explain, too, why our second doses are so much lower. We're in our first week of second-dose allocations, and if you remember, when we first started, it was a holiday week, and it was only healthcare providers. So we had a really hard time getting folks to come in that first week to get vaccines. Story has really changed since then. So this weekend, by the end of this week, we've got another 1,500 second doses. Now, to your question. I have asked that question for a month from the state of North Carolina. Not to get confusing, because it's like you need a pie chart and arrows and graphs, but if someone doesn't show up for their second dose, you're absolutely right. We've got a vial, and we've got doses potentially. If we give someone else, a new person, a first dose from a second dose batch, where will they get their second dose from? We don't know that answer, because the state has told us specifically, zero doses on your shelves, or you'll be penalized. So we don't have a backlog to find them from Commissioner McCray. And I'll tell you something today. This is one of those things, it's, it's hard about public health. We had a gentleman show up today, at the end of the day. Today was his second-dose day, and it was a Moderna vial. We had completely used our Moderna. People had come, and we would've opened another vial for him. And then, I would've called the state immediately and said, really, what do I need to do? We have another staff member who is a first responder at our Health Department, who's eligible for a Moderna vaccine, and she said, if there's a dose today, I'll take it, but I'll wait, because we're not gonna open a new vial. So we talked to that gentleman today, it gives me chills, he was just so nice, and he said, we, he's like, I couldn't lay my head down tonight if I did that. We explained the situation to him, he said, I'll be more than happy to come back tomorrow. So he's gonna come back tomorrow and make a second trip to the Health Department. We hated to ask him to do that, but the reality was, if we had given him that dose today, it was his second dose, it was his deserved second dose, he came. But other people didn't show up today, because they either showed up yesterday, or they plan on showing up tomorrow, and so we would've had nine, and then eight, because our staff member doses, that we would've had to find something to do with. And I'm really not wanting to throw any in the trash, because we haven't done it, and everybody wants this thing, and I don't wanna throw any in the trash. But getting it to zero gives you no wiggle room. And I have said it until I'm blue in the face at the state of North Carolina, the directions you're giving us are mutually exclusive. We cannot run to zero and give second doses whenever anybody wants them. And they've even told us, if somebody shows up from another area that didn't get a dose from you, you should try to work them in. We don't have a dose for them on a second dose, because we're working on people we've already dosed. So they, today, we had a statewide call, and we're told that more direction would be coming. Don't know when it's coming, but we're here, y'all. We are in second dose. So I'm very thankful for that gentleman today. He's a Davidson County gentleman, and he was, he said, it's not a big deal for me to come by tomorrow, and that's the kinda thing we're experiencing right now. We've got some really great community members who are doing some pretty phenomenal things, like making a second trip to the Health Department to save doses. I mean, y'all, that's just fantastic, so.
You know, there's some, some of these counties don't have a hospital.
Yes, sir.
Now, if they distribute it to the hospitals, most of it to the hospitals, those counties gonna be short.
That's right.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Y'all have a good night. Email me anytime, and I'll make sure to get that allocation to Casey this week. Okay? Thanks, sir.
Okay. If you have not registered, if you're interested in speaking tonight, and have not registered for public address, do you have anybody?
We've got two.
Okay. Okay.
Madam Chair, that will be after adoption of the agenda.
Oh, is it after that? Okay. Well, on my piece of paper.
Bring it on up here.
Just to remind folks to register.
Oh, okay. Just that, okay. Yes, thank you. Just leave it right there. Okay. All right. I've got some information about the adoption of the agenda. Due to the expected length of the public hearings, I'm asking that they be moved to follow the consent agenda. The planning department has asked that Agenda Item 8E, which is called Item to Set for Public Hearing Rezoning Request by Carlos, hard name, P.O.A., to rezonate .69 plus or minus acre in Lexington Township from LI to RM be removed from the agenda. The application has been withdrawn.
Madam Chair, I'll make a motion, we approve the amended consent agenda.
Okay, do I have a second?
Take it. You gonna do it on clicker?
Yes, sir.
Please cast your vote.
Have a chair, did you? Can I get your vote?
Okay. Try again. My computer not working.
Every once in a while, when they sit a really long time before we start it, does give me a hiccup. Commissioner Elliott?
Commissioner Schale. Good. Didn't hear quite good. Didn't you get my vote?
Yes, sir.
Oh, you said me?
Yes, sir.
The dark side.
I'm gonna give it a free yes, but that's okay. I think once we get it, once we get them started, the hiccup goes away, because I'm sitting here just flashing, I don't know what's going on. All of the votes are in. And that motion carries by a vote of seven-zero.
Thank you for straightening me out. For public address, we have James Henderson. James, would you state your name and address?
James Henderson, eleven-oh-seven Briggs Road, Lexington, North Carolina.
Thank you.
Thank you for letting me speak this afternoon, and thank you for what y'all doing.
Thank you.
And I'm here to ask for consideration on my privacy and my family's health, and some of my neighbors. I spoke to Commissioner Yates about, I have some neighbors that have automatic fire weapons. They shoot all hours, day and night. My wife has epilepsy. A few of my neighbors have epilepsy, and I've had to take her to the hospital several times for having convulsions. That costs me forty-five hundred dollars every time I go to the hospital for them to give her valiums to stop her seizures, and I have to pay the bill. I'm not trying to take away nobody's rights of the Second Amendment to discharge firearms, but I shouldn't have to be woke up at two o'clock in the morning, one o'clock in the morning, or midnight, or eleven-thirty, because somebody's under the influence of alcohol or drugs, or just wants to go out there and shoot their guns off, all hours, day and night, because they want to. I own fifteen acres. I shoot, I deer hunt on my property. I've had the cops calling me, because I shot one time on my property. This guy goes out there and shoots hundreds of rounds at a time. You can go look at the nine-one-one tape and listen to the call yourself. The woman even asked, "Am I safe? Do I have a safe place to go?" She even asked the officer that was investigating the call, was he safe? Did he need backup? Because this guy's shooting a fully-automatic AK-15 or whatever he's shooting. Now, I don't mind anybody shooting their rifles, but when he's only got five-eighths of an acre, and while I said you gotta be more than three hundred feet from a house to discharge a firearm, and he doesn't even have that, that he owns or rents? And then he's shooting into a bank, or into the woods where children play, all hours, day or night? My neighbors are afraid to let their youngins out of the house to go play in the woods. I played in the woods as a youngin', and I'm pretty sure each one of y'all did. I went to talk to him, and my neighbors have went to talk to him. He's threatened each and every one of us with firearms, but we had to prove that in a court of law. But what I'm telling you, you can go to nine-one-one, listen to the phone call, and listen to the tape. That proves my point. But I shouldn't have to pay for my wife going to the hospital, because she has epilepsy which can kill, which Tom, he was gonna be here tonight, but his grandmother's passed away. And he said, "If y'all needed his phone number, he'd be glad to talk to you about it." Because he's had to take his wife, because of the same issue, to the hospital. And then there's another gentleman that lives on the same road this guy does, had to go to the hospital for epilepsy. And we shouldn't have to keep paying the bill, because somebody's wanting to discharge their guns at all hours of day and night, and disturbing our peace, our sleep, and our rest, because they just wanna get out there and shoot.
Three minutes, Mr. Henderson.
I apologize. Can I go further, please?
Maybe another minute.
Okay, thank you. It's okay for everybody to have their guns and their firearms, but if my country's at war, I'll stand up and defend my country. But when I'm woke up out of a sound sleep, I don't know whether I should grab a gun to defend my home or call the cops, because somebody's trying to break into my home. And all I'm asking for is peace and quiet. I have medical issues, just like my wife does. And all I'm asking for is to have some type of ordinance put in place to protect us, so we can have our peace and quiet, because I moved there thirty years ago, before anybody, any of these people ever moved in. And if you're gonna write me a ticket for drinking and driving, why can't you give them a ticket for discharging a firearm under the influence? That's all I'm asking.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Robin Henderson?
Sorry, it's a little empty, but one night, when I went to the bathroom, just all of a sudden, the firearm started back up, sounded like a machine gun, just going off. You couldn't even count them. And then I fell where a van is and broke my foot. I broke my left foot, and I even broke my right foot. And my knee, it's going out, and I get woke up, I get woke up all hours of the night for the same thing. And if you, he went, my husband went over one time, and he told him to leave. All of us have, and it just keeps going on and on. And then there's another ordinance that's going on too. After it gets dark, there's cars that comes up our numbers of time, all night, just racing. If you look at the end of Briggs Road, the hallway of Church Road, he wrecked. It's all over the place down our, the cars is wrecking, just because they wanna get out and speed. What about if somebody was walking at the time? Because I had been walking, my husband has, and I'm afraid he'd go out and walk, because of the people that's speeding, or him shooting. I just ask that something be done about it to help the people, because we got all these illnesses and the seizures. I never know when they come on. I've even been in a car, and I won't drive no more, because I've had seizures and not even know it. But they've even got somebody up there with a cannon that goes off. I don't know the person, I don't even know where it is, but it's up our own Briggs Road. And we just ask that something be done to the people that's shooting and racing.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you both. All right. Item number eight, this is the consent agenda. Are there any items to remove from the consent agenda for discussion?
Madam Chair, I'd like to remove item eight H.
H?
For brief discussion.
Okay.
H, H, H.
Anything else?
Madam Chairman, make a motion to approve the consent agenda with the remainder of the consent agenda.
Okay. I have a motion in a second. Cast your vote.
Commissioner Shores, could I have your vote? There we go. Okay. All of the votes are in. And that motion carries by a vote of seven-zero.
Commissioner Schale?
Well, Chuck's left, and I need Chuck here.
He's grabbing Major Cravens.
Is the sheriff here?
Major Cravens.
Okay. Okay, you do. Come on. I have a question for Chuck and for you. The only problem I've got is the fact that I'm concerned where it says, a hundred dollars within thirty days of receiving an invoice for its testing services with an additional one hundred dollars if testimony for any court is necessary to qualify the results of its examination. Now, the problem I've got is, as you very well know, any time you're talking about forensics, and you're talking about a criminal case, for example, those type of cases can go on for two years. How many times your officer gonna go up there and sit and not testify, and not get paid?
That's an open-ended question. We really don't know that.
Well, but you're not prepared to compensation. It ought to be a hundred dollars per trip, is what I'm seeing, because it's costing for him to go up there and sit, even if he don't testify. And you've got grand jury, you've got district court levels, you've got superior court levels, probable cause, all those things, and a hundred dollars, and it plainly says, "If testimony is required." And so, I'm not so sure that you're being protected, your officer's being protected, and I'm so sure that your budget's being protected by limiting yourself to a hundred-dollar court cost if he testified. And that necessarily pulling out that, about the multiple trips that your officer may have to make to go up there and sit in court for two years. A hundred dollars? Really? There should be some, something there that says for Slife County, if we're sending our officer up there, if you're requesting our officer be subpoenaed, and he has to come up there and sit, it's only fair, you know, that you're reimbursed for that.
And I understand what you're saying, and it could happen in any criminal case from another county that we get involved in, we investigate it, we're gonna get subpoenaed, we're gonna go do the exact same thing, we're not gonna get paid a dime.
Now, you're providing a service in addition to that.
We are, and that's, this is, we're trying to get some help in keeping our computer lab going. And I'm gonna let...
Well, I think it's a great thing. I'm just concerned that, you know...
We don't know whether it'll be one day, we don't know whether it'll be one hour. We don't know if we just have to show up, and they say, "Hey, we're gonna plead." We don't know that. And I know most, that's the way the courts run.
I just wanted to bring it to your attention. If y'all happy with it, but it's gonna, it's gonna end up costing you down the road, because I know, you know how court, I know how court goes.
And when court finally gets going strong, it's, there's gonna be a lot of testimony.
He's got thirty-day out on it, if you're not happy, is that correct? If I remember right. Is that right, Chuck?
Yes, sir.
Although, number E there does say that, if I'm reading that right, that their maximum exposure is three thousand dollars annually. So, they're not gonna pay any more than that, no matter if we gotta sit up there for two, you know...
And I suspect...
Yeah, but I like to get that three thousand.
I understand. And we may just bill them the whole three thousand.
You write it up front.
That per guy, or is that multiple?
It says that their exposure annually is three thousand.
So, that means if you...
They're gonna pay three thousand annually.
It pays twenty.
Right.
That needs to go up there.
Well, excuse me, normally, it would be one in the computer lab, because normally Sergeant Todd, he's the primary, so he would be normally that primary person, and then we have two others that may be involved. But if he starts the case, he's gonna finish the case. So, it would be him and him alone going to testify, dealing with the forensic lab. It's just, so like any of the other two, it would be them alone going to testify, because they try to keep cases assigned to just one person when it comes dealing with that.
Yes, sir. That's great.
How often do we do that now? Is that four, five times a year?
Testify or dealing with other agencies?
Other agencies, I guess.
Downloads and...
That's every day, yeah. It's every...
Well, I guess I'm talking about, how many times in a year would you go to Forsyth or Guilford County or wherever and give your testimony?
Commissioner Yates, to that point, and I don't wanna jinx myself here, but in trying to learn the technology, get the training, and get the equipment that was initially broken back in two thousand seventeen, I have never been called to testify here within our local county or any other county to date. Sergeant Blake, who assists me in the lab, he has been called to testify one time in district court. And just to your point about how many downloads we may do, just iPhones, this figure may be off by ten or twenty, but last year, I believe, we did two-hundred-and-seventy iPhone-specific extractions with Grashift software that this MOU is directly related to, and of that, only a hundred and thirty were for the Davidson County Sheriff's Office. So, it's about a hundred and forty that were for other agencies.
Other agencies.
Yes, sir.
Wow. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Then I'll make a motion that we accept this, we call it, Chuck.
Okay. Have a motion?
Do we have a second?
I did.
Thank you.
I just want to make sure you're protected there, sir.
Yeah, well, that's Greek to me somewhat, so I appreciate you.
Commissioner Yates, that's pretty, what's the word I'm looking for? That software, much like back in the day, when they switched from a breathalyzer to an intoxicilizer, it's gained judicial notice, so there's very little call for somebody to actually be called to testify for that.
Commissioner Yates, can I have your vote, please?
I ain't made up my mind.
All the votes are in. And that motion carries by a vote of seven-zero.
We're moving on to public hearing. First of all, we have text amendments to the zoning ordinance. I declare the public hearing open. Mr. Crook will introduce the application.
How are you doing?
Well, good, sir.
Sir, how are you? Yes, I'm in my seat. You gonna let me have your seat? For just a little bit. Thank you, Jim.
Jason, you want my seat?
Thank you. Gosh.
Okay. We have our first item, first public hearing tonight, Madam Chair and esteemed board. We have a text amendment to Davidson County zoning ordinance, which you folks will recognize. This started back in November, and it's had a couple iterations. I'd like to read the legal and then give a brief description of where it's at, if that's okay. The legal reads, "There's a request by Terramore Development LLC to amend the Davidson County zoning ordinance, Section six point oh six, standards for off-street parking and loading, by adding if literal compliance with this section causes undue hardship, a variance may be requested to reduce the off-street parking requirement per subsection D of this section. If substantial evidence is presented to support said reduction, applicant would also request to amend Section seven point oh four, Board of Adjustment, subsection C, Powers and Duties, number three, by amending the existing language to read, "Hear and Decide Appeals for Variances from the Dimensional Regulations and Off-Street Parking" of the ordinance." Now, that's the original legal that we have moved away from. At your places tonight, I think Debbie laid a piece of paper that starts with the assistance from the legal department. That's the language that, upon being remanded back to the planning board... That's the language that, um, upon being remanded back to the planning board on January fifth, they voted to, um, recommend approval of the language before you tonight. They did change the, um, the language for appeal in, at its, uh, section seven point oh seven to request, so you would request a variance instead of, there's an appeal. And the, I think there was an issue with, someone was concerned about, um, the language of undue hardship. Well, there are other sections in the, um, in the zoning ordinance specifically under the variance section that speak to practical difficulties and undue hardships. That's in the section that, um, bear with me, I'll... Section seven eleven variances reads, uh, findings required. Now, this is by the Board of Adjustment. Um, the variance may only be allowed by the Board of Adjustment in cases involving practical difficulties or undue hardships when substantial evidence is provided for the official record that supports each of the following findings. So it can either be a practical difficulty or an undue hardship. Both of those terms are very subjective. Uh, what is a practical difficulty or an undue hardship? It's different in each municipality, it's different in each jurisdiction, and that's by design. The reason staff wanted to put it in this process or, or try to include it in this process, there's only one mechanism available to us per statute that will allow us to make an exception to the zoning ordinance, and, and a variance is basically an exception. Um, this board sets content, that you guys adopt the ordinance and set content, but there's never been an ordinance adopted that can speak to each exact situation that we come, you know, that comes to our office. So there, there needs to be a mechanism to allow some, some deviation or variance to certain, uh, quantitative rules. So this is a tried procedure, uh, it's, it's, we've had this procedure in place for fifty years, it's been very successful. Up to date, we, we hear variances on, on setbacks, which is a dimensional requirement. We added fence height variances to allow people to go a little taller on their fences several years back, and, uh, we would like to, uh, add the, uh, reduction of parking spaces to that list, that laundry list of things that we can deviate from. In talking with, um, the applicant, who's Daniel Alsman, it's my understanding he supports this, this process. He wants to see this, this amendment go through. So, um, I ha, I'm here for any questions. If, if anybody has any concerns, I'll try to answer them.
Is the Terramore representative here?
Mr. Alsman is here, yes.
Okay.
So this, this gives you what you'd need as far as the, going back to the planning board and that, and that variance, correct?
Hello, good evening. Uh, Daniel Alzmann with Terramore Development at two forty-one Clumac Road in Salisbury. Uh, yes, that, to answer your question, this, this would give us that mechanism, that option, and, and really...
And I don't mean this in a bad way, I'm just using you as an example, because it could be other businesses that may turn around and come back.
Exactly.
So I want to make sure as a business owner, it was giving you the options that you sought as far as a reduction of your parking spaces on your Dollar General store.
It did, and, and, uh, I mean, like, I wanna really recognize the, the amount of work that staff and the planning board and, and obviously the commissioners have, have put into this to provide that opportunity, not just for us, but for any business. And, and so, uh, we had a long discussion at the last planning board meeting, and, and I mean, like, it was, it made me feel proud to do business in Davidson County, just with the, the amount of effort and, and the work that's being put in just to provide this as an option. I mean, this is not a big deal, but, but just, uh, you know, knowing that you're working with us, it means a lot. And, uh, but, but I do wanna con, confirm that, yes, this would do and give us that, that option, and as long as this board is happy with the language, we're more than happy to move forward with that. Okay.
Any other question? Comments?
Are you seeing this in other counties, uh...
Yeah. Uh, most of the counties that I, uh, that we've worked in have like this, this language already built in their, uh, you know, their ordinance, and so, so that, that provides that avenue for us to, to use. Uh, but, but I think this one stays true to the, the existing ordinance, it just provides, uh, guidance in, in terms of how to go about that, uh, rezoning, or, I'm sorry, the, uh, variance application.
Yeah. Is there anyone in the audience who wishes to speak either in favor of or in opposition to this request?
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Crook, what is the staff recommendation for this request?
Uh, staff, staff's going to recommend approval of the text amendment as voted on by the planning board on their January fifth meeting, uh, with, with the language as stated on the, uh, the documents you have in front of you.
Further discussion?
Sounds good to me. I'll take a motion.
Okay.
Madam Chair, if you'd like to...
I have a motion in a second. I've declared the public hearing closed, um, and request and adopt the resolution on statement of consistency. You ready for us to... Yes. Cast your vote.
I was pushing the button, I didn't know if it come through or not.
Okay.
All the votes are in. And that motion carries by a vote of seven zero.
Thank you, Daniel.
We have a rezoning request by Randy Blanton in Cotton Grove Township containing four hundred and fifty-nine plus or minus acres from MXR to RS. I declare the public hearing open. Mr. Crook will introduce this application.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Um, we have a request by Randy L. Blanton to rezone property in Cotton Grove Township, tax map twenty-seven, lot one, and tax map twenty-eight, lot one, containing four hundred and fifty-nine acres more or less. Said property is located on the west side of Linwood-Southmont Road between the Fisher Farm Road intersection and the Riverside Drive intersection. Rezoning is requested to change from that of MXR Mixed Juice Residential to that of RS Low Intensity Residential District. Mr. Blanton petitioned the board back in, uh, twenty fourteen and successfully, uh, was able to get the property turned into an MXR district. As part of an MXR district, um, you, you need some type of, um, public sewer or sewer collection system to, to, um, safely reach the densities that are allowed in an MXR. The, um, the plan for that was to do some spray irrigation on a golf course. Golf courses now are not the most lucrative thing in the world, so he wants to change, he wants to change his plans and do a more conventional subdivision and, uh, at a, at a lower density, so, and maybe sell some of the property off as well. So, um, because he's not gonna be able to have that, that wastewater collection system, it makes sense for him to, to move away from the MXR zoning district back to a, a conventional RS district, which is the, still the most highest and protected district, will only allow for modulars or stick-built homes, and, and Mr. Blanton is in the audience.
Cut and dry.
Any questions by the board? Is there anyone in the audience who wishes to speak either in favor of or in opposition to this request? Mr. Blanton, do you have anything else you'd like to add? Okay, all right. Mr. Crook, what's the staff, staff recommendation for this request?
Um, staff, you have my staff recommendation in the packet, um, for, and for the record. In summation, we're gonna support the application, um, for the reasons stated earlier, uh, with an MXR district, you need more infrastructure than will be available, and, um, RS makes sense at the lake because that's, uh, down at the lake, because that's, um, i- it's in a good location for potential expansion of the, the Davidson County Business Center, the industrial park, and, uh, this type of development will, will suit the land better than MXR, uh, development at that density.
Well, I guess I'd sell him golf clubs up, boy.
You should've sold him a long time ago.
What did the zoning, uh, planning zoning board do?
The planning and zoning were voted to approve it as submitted. Five to zero.
I declare the public hearing closed. May I have a motion in second to either approve?
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion that we approve this, uh, along with the resolution, the resolution to statement of consistency.
Very good.
I have a second. Please cast your vote.
I was gonna ask y'all about this the other day, it come, I thought about it. When do they plan on getting started, you know?
With respect to the new subdivision?
Yeah.
That, I don't think Mr. Blanton has any definite plans at this point, so it, it'll be some time in the future.
Okay.
Okay.
Sorry.
We have a rezoning...
Madam Chair?
Yes, sir.
I wish you'd informed Commissioner Yates not to be divulging my golf scores.
Post net family up here.
Uh, we have a request by Daniel Peck in Cotton Grove for, containing one, um... Am I on the right page? Did I turn my...
Yes.
Yes, I'm on the right page.
Yes.
In Cotton Grove, containing one point oh nine, um, plus or minus acres from HC to RC. I declare the public hearing open, Mr. Crook.
Mr. Sheph, you're like me, in my round of golf, I get a little more out of it than most people do, so, uh, feel you there. Um, we have a request by Daniel Peck to rezone property, property located in Cotton Grove Township, tax map thirty-three A, lot eleven, lot, or, excuse me, block eleven, lot thirteen, containing one point zero nine acres more or less. Property is further described as being located on the south side of Avenue K, approximately three hundred feet east of the NC Highway eight intersection at one fifty-eight Avenue K. Rezoning is requested to change from that of HC Highway Commercial District to that of RC Rural Commercial, Commercial District. Um, with this particular application, we've got an existing business, um, where we've got three mini storage buildings on property, and Highway Commercial has a, um, has a fairly large front setback. It requires a fifty-foot front setback. Rural Commercial only requires a thirty-foot front setback. And if, successful, Mr. Peck plans on building one more mini storage building on this property. This, this property does not front Highway eight, it fronts Avenue K, so it is a little bit off of the, the main commercial avenue there on Highway eight. And I think Mr. Peck is in the audience to, uh, to address his application.
Mr. Peck, would you like to say anything? Okay. Do any of you have any questions? No questions?
Madam Chair, I talked with, uh, Mr. Peck a few weeks ago...
Yes.
And priced some work for him on this piece of property, so I'd like to, uh, refrain from voting on this if, uh, the board see fit.
Okay.
Madam Chair?
Yes, sir.
I'd like to make a motion.
What kind of a mo, a motion would you like to make?
I'd like to make a motion that we approve the changes, uh, with, in line to the, we need to excuse Commissioner, yes. We have to vote on the...
Yeah, we have to do that first, okay?
We have to vote on that.
Do we need a motion for that? Yes.
Yes, yes, sir. Okay.
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion, uh, per, uh, Commissioner Todd's request that we recuse him from this session of vote.
Do I have my, do I have a second?
Second.
Can I have a second? Verbal vote?
Yeah.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay. Now, um, the, the staff recommendation, let's do that before we take a, um...
Again, my staff recommendation's in the, in the file for the, uh, for the record. In summation, it basically says, the, um, this is kind of a transitional area between the main commercial corridor or the main commercial node in Southmont, and you're starting to transition into some more residential properties down Avenue K. Uh, staff, uh, will support the introduction of a rural commercial district, uh, in this location to, to better, um, help Mr. Peck help utilize his property to the fullest extent. I would also like to add that policies from the Davidson County Land Development Plan one point five, one point seven, one point eight, and one point two one support this application.
Thank you. Thank you. Any further discussion? I, I declare the public hearing closed.
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion in regards to the resolution on statement of consistency that we change this from a highway commercial district to a rural commercial district.
Thank you. I have a motion. I have a second. Please cast your vote. All right. We have a rezoning request, oop, wait, wait.
Who? I can't vote?
We forgot.
I could, but I, I don't, I don't wanna go to jail.
I don't wanna go to jail. Sorry, we're all tired. Thank you. Now, we have a re, rezoning request by Stephen Drew Money in Cotton Grove Township containing one point one one plus or minus acres from RA one to CZHZ. I declare the public hearing open, and Mr. Crook will introduce the application.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Um, we have a request by Stephen Drew Money to rezone property in Cotton Grove Township, tax map, what is that, twenty-six, lot thirty-four, containing one point one one acres more or less. Said property is located on the east side of NC Highway eight, approximately twelve hundred feet north of the Gray Road slash Walford Road intersection at the address eighty-six ninety-seven NC Highway eight. Rezoning is requested to change from that of RA one Rural Agricultural District to that of CZHC, Conditional Zoning Highway Commercial District. This, this is our new toy, our new tool. Uh, for years, everybody's been familiar with, um, the CU District, the Conditional Use Zoning. We've now, uh, we have a one-sixty D compliant, uh, zoning ordinance which has conditional zoning. We no longer have to have two motions for this, but we have to caution that the, that when we vote, when we make a vote tonight for this, it's a legislative action. Interaction between the applicant and the board can take place. The, the applicant will have to sign any condition indicating his or her, um, you know, acceptance of those conditions, but the conditions must be extremely clear. Now, there, there is a list in your packet, and I'll be happy to read those if the board decides to support the rezoning request at the appropriate time so that everyone's clear on it. Um, this pro... Yes, sir.
I have a question. On the, on the request, on the statement of consistency, it actually says CZRC.
Correct. The, um, the planning board and staff, uh, recommended CZRC...
Okay.
For very similar reasons to the last rezoning request. The, the setback is reduced in CZRC, and the character of this property lends itself better to rural commercial district than a highway commercial.
Okay.
While it is on NC Highway eight, uh, that's not a, a core economic development opportunity core or a corridor, and, um, there is residential development to the north of this. This is kind of the, the northern fringe edge of this little commercial node there at Gray Road and Walford Road there at Highway eight that has been growing over the past, you know, five, six, seven years.
Can y'all give us like a fifteen-minute seminar on this at an upcoming, um, informational meeting?
Sure. Be glad to.
On this, in that way, if we got any questions or...
Yeah. Love to.
All right.
Very good.
Are we, are we at the conditions, Madam Chair?
No. I, I think we're ready for him to explain...
Mr. Money is, is in the audience to, to come up and speak to his application.
Explain his request, and then if you need to add, add further information, go ahead.
Good evening, how are you guys?
Good, good, sir.
Uh, my request is with the board because, uh, my business is growing and I need a place to go. Um, I'm a contractor with, here in Davidson County doing heat and air, uh, electrical and plumbing, and, um, I'm actually working at my father-in-law's shop now, and he's gonna retire, so I need a place to go, and I found this property, I thought it was suitable because of the, uh, being able to be seen where that is, you know, for maybe some advertising there as well, but, um, and I grew up in Davidson County, so it's just something that happened to fall into my lap. I found it and it's worked out so far, um, so, you know, so I'd appreciate the approval to get it done. And basically, all I'm gonna do there is, is I'm looking at building a forty-by-sixty storage building, basically. Uh, I've got four employees, and we're basically just gonna store material there, show up there in the morning, uh, do what we need to do, and then disperse to our jobs that we do. They may come in periodically to, uh, restock their trucks, get stuff they need, or pick something of, of that nature, whatever, but, um, there's not gonna be any retail at all there, it's just gonna be just for us to have a place to go to and store stuff, uh, so.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Crook?
Okay. Um, again, staff recommendation is in the packet for the record. Um, in summary, we're gonna recommend approval of this. We, we will support the introduction of a CZRC district at this location, being that it is on NC Highway eight and it is close enough... being that it is on NC Highway 8, and it is close enough to, um, the, what we would, would term the, uh, Gray Road/Walford Road commercial node that's there. It's a little commer- developing commercial area. Um, the CZ district, the, the, the conditions we feel are, are very applicable and necessary because there's residential development on the property to the north of this. So, we want to make sure that we, we do offer conditions to, uh, to, to make sure that that's protected. And we feel like, um, Mr. Money's, the type of business that he's, he's placing there lends itself to residential development because it's a service-oriented is- industry. People are always going to need their, their heating and air fix, so, um, if you want me to at this time, I'll be glad to read the, uh, read the conditions for the board if, if that's, if it's appropriate.
Well, uh, maybe we should see if anyone in the audience wishes to speak, either in favor of or opposition. I don't, I don't believe I see anyone. Okay, go right ahead.
All right.
Mm-hmm.
Thank you. Um, the conditions as submitted by the applicant, um, there, there's only, uh, only building will be a 42-by-60-foot building for office space, meeting areas, and storage of equipment. Only five employees will be on-site at any time. Only traffic will be employees' meeting before service calls. Um, only service truck and one service van to remain parked on property after hours. All rest will be driven home by employees daily. No parts or equipment will be stored outside on the property, and a line of abor-tai green, uh, trees or similar will be planted along the northern property line sufficient to screen this use from the neighboring property. Um, staff, in his, in staff's support of the application, we would recommend the CZRC, not the CZHC. Yeah.
Will I be allowed to have a dumpster with this?
It is in...
For our stuff that we would waste, or boxes or something like that that we would first... Our material stuff, is that, is that going to be allowed, uh, to have just one single?
Sure, sure, I, yeah.
Dumpster out there?
I think that, I think that's appropriate and fine.
Madam Chair, I have a question.
Why is he limited to, to the size of the building? When it's got so much space on the north end?
Commissioner Schell, that's, that's, he submitted that. We're, we're not limiting him to that. That's, that was his submission.
Okay, if, if that being the case, I don't see why we're putting that as a condition, one. Let him make that decision, that's his property.
Sure.
And number two, I, I don't, I've never had before telling the business owner how many employees he can have.
Amen. I was six months back.
And I, I, I've, I've seen this board take those conditions out in the past, and then...
But that's a long story.
Keep, keeping in mind, Mr. Money submitted these conditions to us. These are not conditions that we came up, came up with.
When we had the zone meeting in, begin in January, um, one of the zone, uh, the members...
Planning board, planning board members.
Planning, uh, planning board members said that, um, am I ever going to grow? And I was like, well, I, I don't, I'm kind of happy where I'm at, but if it happens, it happens. But I think he was wondering, I, I kind of had the same question, uh, if I have five employees, if, if me and my four guys are there and somebody shows up, does somebody have to leave?
No.
I mean, I don't, I just didn't understand how that really...
Madam Chair, is that...
I think you should have the opportunity to grow.
Hey, man, we want you to grow.
Absolutely. And of course, if something happens and I did grow, and I would, of course, get it approved, but if it, I did need another small building or something, you know, for the future.
Not, not speaking for the board, but I've, I've seen them remove this type of condition completely.
Yeah.
Uh, in the past, so, uh...
I'd like to see it removed and spread out.
Me, too.
Well, that's, that's myself, too.
As well as...
Commissioner Schell. I, I don't know what the proper thing is, Madam Chair. Do I need to make a motion to remove that one, or?
Well, we might want to move some more of them, too.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
Number one.
But I, I got a question. I mean, is this, this is what you turned in? Is this what you want? Or is this, uh, something you just felt like you needed to do?
Honestly, I've never done this before.
(laughing).
So, I've, I've, I've never, I've only been in business for myself for three years now, and, you know, I've been blessed that it's gotten this big, so I'm kind of wondering where this is going to go. But I guess this was a start with, with the planning, and they've helped me so much. And, uh, it's been a lot easier process than I kind of thought it was, and they're great. And, um, I mean, I would love to be able to expand on some of this if I could in the future with... Because, I mean, I really do have a nice lot there, and it, there is some room to grow. Um, but I guess it's just what I can get approved for, and I just don't want to be limited to something if I need to come back later and say, hey, I need, I need more, I need another building, I need something to be able to grow. Am I going to be able to do this, or am I just limited to these conditions completely? So...
In, in negotiation with Mr. Money, the staff did recommend the screening along the northern property line.
Yes.
That's the only, that's the only condition that we, we, uh, asked him, and he agreed to that. But as for the others...
One needs to be on there, to be honest with you.
I think because of the n- nearness to the residential areas of number, um, I can't see from here, about storing equipment and parts and stuff on the outside the building. And you say, here, you're going to store them inside the building?
Yes, sir.
I think that would be a good one.
I do, I, I don't, I...
And if I do leave a vehicle there, probably port inside as well. So, basically, as of now, the building and the dumpster potentially would be the only thing that would be outside.
I just hate to, I hate to put that on you. Flexco comes and brings you, you know, a couple units, and they set them outside there, or, you know, you go home, they deliver it late, and it's right, I just, you know, it, this is, this is your place of business. You know, for you not to be able to...
Play, too, because I, I mean, honestly, I've, I've thought about it, but I didn't know if I had the authority to...
For you not to be able to have a bobcat or a trailer outside or a piece of equipment, that's a travesty for us to put that on a local business. That, that would be, I, I couldn't go with that.
I do actually have a excavator and a, a trailer that I do have. I'd keep it at home now, but...
I think the, the biggest thing is for where our commissioners are worried about, having that shield so the residents...
Yes, sir.
You know, have a break between that.
Absolutely, yes, sir. Yeah, and I don't mind that at all.
I just want you to be respectful to your neighbors.
Yes, sir.
That's just a bottom line, respectful.
Absolutely.
Then like you live next door.
Right.
And, and I know, I know, um, Mr. Money wouldn't do this. If, if there is storage of what is termed defined junk by the ordinance, he'd still be applicable to the, to the enforcement section of the zoning ordinance. And so, that, that's in place. So, if you, uh, if it's the board's wishes to remove the, um, outside storage of, of equipment, that's to the discretion of the board.
Unless someone has something to add to it, I, I, uh, um, uh, number six, that's the only one I can think of.
Yes, sir, I agree with that.
I, I agree with that, Commissioner Schell.
You say the control of, of the outside stuff is, is in a zoning order?
If, if, uh, Mr. Money, let's say, old duck work from an old job is laying around outside, that, that would be deemed junk by the Davidson County zoning ordinance, and we could ask him to clean that up. That mechanism's there to prohibit the storage of, of, well, junk.
Yeah, that's what I'd be worried about.
Yeah, but, but...
Not a, not a piece of machinery.
Yeah.
Amen.
Well, that sounds like we're all in agreement to just have number six.
That's the only condition, just have the, uh, screening on the northern property line?
I believe it. Does everyone...
Yeah, that's, I'm good with that.
Does everyone agree?
I hope you got 15 employees in two years, you know?
And then I assume you're, you're good with that, Mr. Money?
I'm glad y'all brought that up.
Yeah, that's a good, good move.
Well, this can take place when, in one motion, and the, the only condition is a line of, of, uh, abor-tai-type trees or similar will be planted on the northern property line.
Do I have a motion?
I'll make that motion, Madam Chair.
You want to, you want to say it?
I'll make the motion that, uh, we keep line six, a line of...
Conditions.
Trees.
Trees. Evergreen types, screening trees.
Or similar will be planted along the north property lines sufficient to screen the use from the neighbor's property.
And we approve the CZRC.
Oh, I'm sorry, you need a complete motion, okay. Uh, and that we, um, adopt the resolution of statement of consistency, Davidson County Board of Commissioners to rezone from RA1 to CZRC.
Man, good.
Do that properly, Madam Clerk.
You surely do. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. Please cast your vote.
Good luck.
Ah.
I hope you're successful.
Growth, if you choose. Appreciate your business.
Wish you the best, brother.
Have a motion and se- uh, second to go into closed session.
I'll make a second.
You want verbal or on the clicker?
Vote verbal.
Oh, Lord.
Uh, in a, in a...
Or I can take five minutes, y'all start then.
Can't do that. Let's take some...
Work on that golf swing.
Reconvene.
Reconvene.
See you.
Let's come back into session. I know everybody wants to go.
Okay, we're back.
They charged me $25,000.
Are we on the record, Madam Clerk?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. May I please the Court?
Mr. Frahm?
Madam Chair, the Board considered matters in closed session, both for personnel and for attorney-client. In personnel, it was for informational purposes only. In attorney-client, there were four matters that were considered. Two of them involved pending litigation, and I'm required to recite the name of those cases into the record. Madam Clerk, I'll give you a full citation after the meeting. But for the record, it's simply McCall versus Davidson County and Hendrick versus Bartrug. The other two matters, one was for informational purpose, and the final matter, the Board gave direction to counsel with regard to further negotiation. That's all, thank you.
Thank you.
You want to know how things have changed? When they passed the workers' comp laws, it was to avoid suits. It was supposed to be treated fairly so the lawyers don't get involved. What is the biggest advertisement they could see on TV?
Workers' comp.
No. You want to leave your closed session stuff there, I will grab it.
Is there a motion?
Motion to adjourn.
Thank you. Second, thank you.
Third, fourth, fifth.
Yeah, I'll call it.
All right.